Today is September 20th, 2016, and it's 5 o'clock. And I called to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Successor. Have roll call, please.
Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember McEckern, Councilmember Negretti,
Mayor Pro Tim Cox, Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't have any cards and I don't see anyone in the audience that wants to address the council. Therefore, at this time, can we have declaration of closed session items by City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have 10 items listed on closed session this evening. Items A, B, and G, H, I, and J are all somewhat related. They are all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. And that is litigation by between COMAV and SCLA in the City of Victorville. Items A and B are on behalf of the City Council. The other four items are on behalf of the Airport Authority. And the case numbers and different cases are specifically set forth on the agenda, as are the parties. Item C is, in fact, we do not need item C. We can pull item C. We do not need it this evening. There's no updated.
Which one?
Item C. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9. And the facts and circumstances pertaining to that litigation are set forth on the agenda pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. Item E is anticipated litigation, and again, pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9. And this pertains to a dispute between San Bernardino Fairgrounds and the City of Victorville. Item F is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2 and pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9E1. The facts and circumstances related to that litigation need not be disclosed at this time. To the extent there is any reportable action, it can be reported either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the 6 o'clock regular session.
Thank you. We will now recess to our closed session and regular session commence at 6:00 PM. It is 6:04, September 20th, 2016. And I called to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had 10 items listed on the agenda this evening. Items A and B, along with items G, H, I, and J, were all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. Litigation between COMAV and the City and Airport Authority. Items A and B were on behalf of the City Council. The other four items on behalf of the Airport Authority. The case numbers and case names are set forth on the agenda. We pulled item C and did not have closed session on that item. Item D was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. And the facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. Item E was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9. One potential case, and again, the facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. Item F was anticipated litigation, also pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. However, pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9E1. The facts and circumstances need not be disclosed at this time. And that is all of closed session. There is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you very much. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. My understanding is that, let's see, we have, the invocation will be delivered by Reverend Patrick Trevers from Holy Innocence Catholic Church. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Lieutenant Fisher. So please stand.
Let's bow our heads and pray. As we gather here this evening, let us remember and pray for the victims of terrorist bombings in New York City, New Jersey, and the stabbings in St. Cloud, Minnesota. We also pray for those City Councils, that as they are meeting to discuss these terrible events to their constituents, we ask you, Lord, to help them find the ways and the means they need to restore the faith and security needed. Let us also give thanks that we here in Victorville, at least today, are removed from it physically. Help our council members use this opportunity to listen to their constituents and connect with the needs of the city, creating in them hearts of courage. And grace them with us, grace them and us with the ability to stand against the violence of our day, the violence in ourselves, our homes, our streets, our communities. This evening, as they undertake the role of leaders, let them be strengthened in the leadership, witnessing your Son Jesus to lead with justice, compassion, and discernment. Make that prayer in your name, O God, amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. Nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have been celebrating the Local Public Safety Heroes Month. And I do have a plaque that I would like to present, so I will come down. Police Captain Greg Herbert, would you please come forward and join me? As I mentioned at our last council meeting, the City of Victorville has joined with our Fall High Desert Cities to proclaim September Local Public Safety Heroes Month. Building a stronger valley is a joint effort among all of our neighbors. As such, I wanted to personally thank the various police captains from our surrounding cities for their outstanding leadership. Police Captain Herbert from the City of Atlanta was able to be here this evening. Captain Herbert, thank you for your commitment to keeping our cities, our citizens throughout the Victor Valley safe. We thank you so much. We appreciate you, and we could never thank you enough for all you do. Back for you here. I'll read this, just so everyone knows how beautifully it reads. The City of Victorville hereby recognizes Police Captain Greg Herbert. Thank you for dedicated service to the City of Atlanta and to the greater Victor Valley. We appreciate your outstanding leadership and commitment to keeping our citizens safe. Together, we build a stronger Victor Valley, acknowledged by Gloria Garcia Mayor, Jim Cox, Mayor Pro Tim, Jim Kennedy Councilmember, Eric Negretti Councilmember, Ryan McCochran Councilmember, dated this 20th day of September, 2016. Thank you so very much for everything you do. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings, so we will move on to public hearings. I don't have any cards. Item B1. Yes, you sure may.
I looked up and saw somebody in the audience I want to honor real quick. I hope you'll allow me to do so. Keith Peterson, if you'd stand up, please, sir. Keith is a former City of Victorville Fire Battalion Chief for many, many years. He retired with the County of San Bernardino. It's also Keith, Eric Keith's birthday today. Happy birthday, Keith.
Well, happy birthday. Okay, so, public hearings. Item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the City Council approval of a notice of exemption from the inter-agency safe route to schools' project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
The recommendation is that the City Council find the inter-agency safe route to schools' project to be categorically exempt in accordance with Section 15301(c), and adopt and approve the notice of exemption for the inter-agency safe route to schools' project.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I don't have any cards from the public, so do we have any comments from the council members? I should be closing the public hearing first. At this time, I close the public hearing, and then, do we have any comments from our council members?
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against approving the assessment of a fair housing, AFH, prepared jointly with the Apple Valley, Victorville, Home, Gondstorium, and Authorizing the submitted of the said AFH to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council conduct the public hearing for the assessment of fair housing plan, adopt Resolution Number 16-052 approving the assessment of fair housing, and authorize the City Manager to execute the HUD-required certification of the AFH.
Thank you. I opened the public hearing, and I do not have any cards from the audience. So at this time, I close the public hearing. And do we have any comments or questions by council members?
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent calendar. The consent calendar items C1 through C80 can be approved with one motion unless there's an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
The consent calendar.
Just a question. There are a number of purchase decisions on the consent calendar, and I'm only wondering why they're there rather than being on a regular action calendar. Because we have some action items for less money.
It depends, sort of a staff call on whether it's on the consent or not. If it's just sort of a fairly routine item, we've been putting them on consent. There was a discussion a few years ago now about maybe setting some sort of a limit, but one was really never established as far as what could be on consent. So certainly, if there's anything on consent that you have an interest in discussing individually, we're happy to pull it. We try to do this just because there was a couple of meetings that we had, I think, eight or 10 written items. It was just time-consuming for fairly mundane items.
Probably the one that stimulated the question was C14, the new server. And I guess I wouldn't mind hearing a little bit about that and why we're spending $115,000. I put in a new server in my office for about 15. Why are we spending so much?
Our servers are a bit larger than that.
You think they might be bigger than mine?
Yeah. And...
Let's pull that one and have a discussion about it.
Joe Haggard is on his way down. He is our information technology officer, but let's...
Do you want to approve the consent calendar?
Probably best to go ahead and approve the rest, or we could hear from Joe and simply approve the entire consent.
And leave it? Can we do that?
Yes, let's, yeah. Yeah, let's just go ahead and hear about C14, and then we can actually make a motion after that.
So we're increasing our capacity and availability for all of our applications. So it's one server, but for lack of a better term, it's a really big server. So all of our utility applications, the utility billing application and customer service applications that help bring in the revenue and help customers, this will add greater reliability, so we'll have two. So if one goes down, we'll still have another one up and carrying that load. When both of the servers are up, it'll be better performance and even faster because we'll have twice the processing performance. But we won't be in a situation to where if we lose one, we're kind of in the dark and can't serve the customers.
It's more than just a backup.
It's another server, kind of identical to the existing one we have now. And it's, it is large. We are a fairly large organization. It's, I don't know if you know U's, but it's...
Size doesn't mean anything with computers anymore, so...
Yeah, that's true. When you have as much processing power on your phone as you do, but it has a lot of CPUs and a lot of memory. So this one has 16 CPUs, and I don't remember the exact amount of memory, but it's a fairly large amount. It's quite more than you would put in your home or, you know, carry around on your cellphone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I believe Mayor Pro Tim Cox had a question.
No, no, I didn't have a question. I just was hoping everybody had read item 16, and about the city's CAPRIS and CON Plan. Extremely interesting acronyms to apply to government, so...
CAPRIS? The Batman reference you commented yesterday in our agenda briefing?
Anyway, with the explanation, then I think there was a motion for all the items.
That is correct.
No, there was no second.
Plus, there was not.
There was not. Not that I heard, okay. Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. And I believe we have a presentation on City of Victorville Fall Festival update. Given by Monica.
Monica Peterson is on her way down to give us all an update. And I'm excited to hear it, because I've heard a lot of big numbers recently.
Well, I'm glad you've been hearing that. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, City Management. I am thrilled to present to you a sneak peek at the upcoming Fall Festival. In eight days, we will transform Civic Drive and City Hall Parking Lot into a festive celebration of our community, with two stages of entertainment, a food court serving tasty treats, over 100 craft and merchandise vendors, a free kids' zone featuring carnival rides, a petting zoo, pony rides, bounce houses, face painting, balloon artists, as well as a second stage with live community performances. Plus, we have added PokéStops throughout the event. This year, we are supporting the launch of the first High Desert Book Festival presented by Victor Valley Arts and Education Center. This festival within our festival will feature special guest author Ann Perry and acclaimed novelist Victoria Zachheim, as well as other local high desert authors. Y102 radio personality Michael Fabella will once again emcee our main stage and will introduce performances by Native American performer Eric Running Path, the colorful performances of Ballet Folklorico Flores. And starting off the morning with some rock and roll on the main stage will be a band called Impact, which features one of our very own city employees. Also performing on the main stage will be longtime local rockers Music Formula, who have been making a name for themselves for the past several decades. We are excited to bring to the main stage a new act. Together with platinum sponsor Harley-Davidson Victorville, the main stage audience will be entertained by the award-winning Indigenous American Blues Band, the Blue Mountain Tribe. Their breakthrough CD titled All Our Nations has recently received an award for Best Blues Recording from Native American Music Awards. Their original music promotes traditional values, Native American culture, while encouraging youth to embrace their heritage. We are proud to have the Blue Mountain Tribe on our main stage. This event offers free entertainment, a free kids' zone, free parking, free admission, and is made possible by sponsorships and support from local businesses, including platinum sponsors Southern California Edison, Harley-Davidson Victorville, and El Dorado Broadcasters. I would also like to thank our gold, silver, and bronze sponsors in advance, if I may. San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, Burt Tech Waste Industries, The Daily Press, Dr. Pepper Snapple, Rancho Motors, Victorville Auto Park, Green DeBornowski, CBS Radio, SCLA, San Bernardino First District Supervisor Robert Lovinggood, and Board of Supervisors, San Bernardino County Firefighter Association Local 935, IEHP, and Desert Community Bank. On behalf of the Fall Festival Committee, I invite all of you and everyone here tonight, as well as your digital audience, to attend the biggest event hosted by the City of Victorville, the 15th Annual City of Victorville Fall Festival. I have cards for you to share with your family and friends proudly, and I welcome your questions and comments.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Monica, for the beautiful work that you have been doing last year was excellent. And I've heard so many people tell me that they're looking forward to coming.
Great. Happy to hear that. It'll be a great time. Let me get these cards to you.
And the ballet folklorico is worth the trip all by itself.
Oh, it's out...
The dancers are just wonderful.
They are. They're so colorful.
Exciting.
We'll be having them on the main stage. I believe they go on at 11, following your welcome, Mayor Garcia, at 10:55. Thank you.
Be there. Monica, thank you so very much. Excellent. I have a stack at my office already. I'm already promoting. No, I don't have your poster, but I need one.
Monica, how much does, comes out of the general fund to support this activity?
Monica, while you're handing that out, I can answer that. None does, actually.
That was a big, big soft answer.
Zero, right. Last year, the event cost approximately $27,000. This year, it's above that amount. However, our sponsorships have covered every penny to allow our community to come out to enjoy the celebration that we are sharing with them all.
So there was really no cost to the city at all?
Pardon me?
Was there any cost, expense to the city?
Zero cost to the city.
That's right, yes.
We really thank our sponsors.
Yes, we really do.
And the excellent job that you do in keeping track of everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Monica. Okay, that's exciting, something to look forward to, since I don't do that much. Okay, we move on to item D2, Measure I Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt Resolution Number 16-054 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, State of California Adopting the Measure I Five-Year Capital Improvement Program."
Just a question of staff or some on the page that lists all the named projects?
Yeah.
Even if it's in the council office, constantly get the questions out, when are certain roads going to be constructed or reconstructed and during what years? And it'd be very, very helpful, very good information, but larger and available.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. We've got, I'm thinking, a couple of different conference rooms that it would be appropriate to post that in on this end of the building. We've got the boards already in place to do that.
Very good.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, Award of Contract to David Evans and Associates, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the board award a professional services provider agreement to David Evans and Associates, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $125,298 for water service line replacement in project area one and two.
Move approval.
I'm going to second. I have a question. These are only the service lines from the main line to the meter? Are they plastic ones and we don't use it?
That's correct. This would be replacing a significant number, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it replaces a significant number of those that we've had some problems with. In fact, for those of you that use La Mesa Road, what looks like a major problem was simply a service line that had a small leak that turned into a large leak and ran underneath the road for quite a fair distance. So this will help remove that liability and fix those things before they break.
And this is one of that long list of replacement projects that we're going to be dealing with?
It is, yes. I was expecting a question about, don't we have engineers that work for the city to work on these things? And as you'll all recall, from the water rate study, as well as some of our road projects that we have going on, the engineers that are full-time employees are all working on bigger projects than these that are of great importance, things that I know there was some concern on the council's part about getting to everything. So this helps us get to everything.
The motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project, capital project needs analysis. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve the capital project needs analysis for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project for fiscal years 2017, 2018 through 2021, 2022.
This is step two in the process. Last meeting was step one when we approved the...
This is a kind of a technical item, simply to get it on the list of Sandbag projects, essentially. We have to approve this in order to be on that long list of projects they plan on building.
Just once again, what's the estimated total cost of the project and what is the cost, ultimate cost to the city, if we know that? I know we don't know exactly, but we know some.
You know, I would hazard a guess, but I don't want to get it wrong. So Brian, if I could have you come down and give us some estimates for total cost of the project and then total cost to the City of Victorville.
Right now, the total cost of the project is about $45 million if you include everything, the design, the right-of-way, the construction, and that's also escalating at about three years into the future. Cost increases. The total cost to the city, there are two ways, there are two things to consider, the initial cash outlay. We have an agreement with Sandbag where our responsibility is about $6 million. There's another agreement that went to city council at the last meeting, that is, it's among the city, the county, and Apple Valley, where Apple Valley would contribute about $4 million and the county about $1 million. So that means the cash outlay would be about $1 million, according to current estimates. However, that's just the cash. Now, ultimately, almost half of the project needs to be paid out of development impact fees, which we discussed in the last agenda item, the last meeting, rather, there was an agenda item with the agreements. And so the ultimate funding of this project, I don't have the figure in front of me, but you figure if it's roughly a $45 million project, approximately half of that ultimately will come from development impact fees. Now, those are offset by the $5 million from the county and Apple Valley.
Brian, just to ask that question a little bit different way so that it's clear for the public, of that roughly, let's say, $20 million or so that would come from Victorville, how much of that comes from current residents of Victorville versus future residents of Victorville through the development impact fees that they'll pay at the end of the project?
Well, all those development impact fees are paid from new development. And because we're still paying off the La Mesa-Nesqually interchange, that means that the new development fees that we will be receiving will all come from new development. New growth in the city will pay for that share.
So the current residents of Victorville aren't, effectively aren't paying anything for this unless they build a new house or buy a brand-new house and pay some additional development impact fees. I think that's something that is important for the council to understand, I know you all do, but the current residents of Victorville share none of the cost of this project, with the exception of monies they would have already spent in sales tax collected by Measure I. But the share that we refer to as Victorville share is really future development share. It's not coming from the city's general fund, it doesn't come from the current residents of Victorville. It only comes from new housing and new commercial development within the city.
If I bought my house 10 years ago and paid through the purchase price, an amount that included a development impact fee that the developer paid, and that that development impact fee is still sitting in the account and is being used for this, in that sense, when I paid that fee, am I, would I be paying for this?
To a certain degree, yes, as well as probably another 50 or so projects throughout the city that are in that development impact fee study to be paid for.
Right.
The point, though, being those fees would be collected regardless of whether or not this project was built.
That's right.
Those fees are charged regardless, developers have to pay that. They pass it on to whoever ultimately buys in that particular project area, or if it's a commercial project, they may pass it on to... Point is, is that there's no taxes on current residents being levied in order to support the building.
Not at all.
Another issue that's probably worth mentioning, people complain about, developers complain about the fees they have to pay when they build, and homeowners complain that this fee is an added-on cost to buying my home. But without those development impact fees, these kind of projects and the kind of improvements that need to be done in the future for future development would never happen. It's absolutely essential. And I think there are some cities that from time to time think, well, if we're going to stimulate building, we should reduce our development impact fees. And while that's attractive to everybody in the short term, in the long term, it's not a very prudent way to plan for the future.
Correct. Part of Measure I prevents the current residents from paying for improvements for future development.
Yeah.
I think I raised the question because people raise the questions to council. It was important to note in the staff write-up, quote, "An additional appropriation is not required." And that's been kind of a rumor that we had increased certain fees or something to pay for it. And it's very complicated, the funding, the grants, the way it works, but we have not put into effect any additional appropriation for this. And all needs to be clarified, and we'll probably have to do it again, but it's important for the public to understand.
Go ahead and move for approval of item D4.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, La Mesa Road-Nesqually Road Interchange, $1 million payment to San Bernardino Associated Governments. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council authorize staff to pay the San Bernardino Associated Governments $1 million for the city's share of the construction costs of the I-15 La Mesa-Nesqually Road interchange from the Road Service Development Impact Fee Fund Number 352.
And Mayor, it's always good to make good on our...
I will, we have to.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Just as a point of information, that agreement that requires us to send them that $1 million this year also says that within 30 days, they will return that to us as Measure I maintenance money that we will then use to do major maintenance on our streets such as Bear Valley Road, La Mesa, and Amethyst this year.
I suspect that Brian will be back before us asking to spend that money on paving roads.
He absolutely will.
Okay, item D6, Award Construction Contract to Eleknor Belko in the amount of $453,256 for the Nesqually Road First Avenue Traffic Signal. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is to appropriate an additional expense of $53,000 from Fund 250, Measure I, appropriate an additional $36,700 from Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant, and award a construction contract in the amount of $453,256 to Eleknor Belko for the Nesqually Road First Avenue Traffic Signal.
Does that seem like a lot of money for a traffic signal?
It seems like it.
If you've never bought a traffic signal before, I can see how it would seem like that.
We're not buying this from a military defense contractor.
No, that is the cost of a traffic signal.
Is it really?
It really is, yes. Yeah, all the arms, not the posts so much, but all the arms are all custom-made to fit each application.
That's four signals on a corner?
Well, yes, but then there's also supplemental signals typically on the curb as well that are not custom, but yeah, that's, that's what it costs these days.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And just as another point of information, that intersection currently has a user-operated flashing beacon for the crosswalk because it is a very busy road, and it flashes LED lights at the traffic when someone hits the button to make it safer. When that equipment comes out, we'll be placing that near Sixth Street Preparatory School to assist with some traffic problems they have there. So we're doing our best to be efficient with all of our projects.
Moving on to D7, Award of Contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council award a contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company in the amount of $2,323,000 for the Bear Valley Road Reconstruction Project, Mariposa Road to Amerigoza Road.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
D8, Approve Award to DFK Solutions Group. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council approve the award of DFK Solutions Group in the not-to-exceed amount of $35,700 for staff training and the development of standard operating procedures in support of sanitary sewer management plan as required by the State Water Resources Control Board.
Is this an annual requirement, Doug, or is it some new developments that our staff needed to be trained about? Is it the result of any problems we've had?
Some of this is not an annual requirement, such as the emergency response plan and things of that nature. The ongoing training, though, they create modules for us for new employees, but we will come back periodically for new training for staff. It's just ramping up their requirements to help out their cause, I guess.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, Approval for the Purchase of Spare Transformers for Victorville Municipal Utility Services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council award a contract to ABB, Inc., Care of Pacific Utilities, in the amount of $47,606.40 for the purchase of four spare transformers for Victorville Municipal Utilities Services electric customers at the Southern California Logistics Airport.
Can somebody explain the difference in these two bids, why they would be so different? Makes you wonder if they're bidding on the same thing.
Yeah, the primary difference is ABB is the actual manufacturer of that standardized component that we actually bid and include as a part of our standard specifications out there. Performance Utility doesn't manufacture those, so they would effectively have to get them from somebody like an ABB or a distributor.
Other question?
For approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D10, Request to Approve an Extension of a One-Year Renewal of the General Services Agreement to American Landscape and Maintenance, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Mayor Garcia, before I read the recommendation on this item, I'd like to point out for the record that there is a revision, and it is on the dais for the council, as well as out in the lobby being made available for the public. At the time of posting of the agenda, this item contains two agreements, and one of those agreements inadvertently was not included with the posting copy. It's the Specialized Landscape Maintenance Agreement, and that is being provided at this time.
Thank you, I see it here.
Since we just received this, can staff give a little explanation or a short explanation on what the specialized agreement is?
I think the best way to generally characterize the difference is a specialized is for different types of work that is not routine. Also, it could include stuff that has greater frequency. I think the best exhibit, actually, it was laid out in the exhibit, pest control, plant removal replacements, those would be items, as for example, would be more specialized in nature, as opposed to the routine would be trimming, sweeping, blowing, things of that nature.
Reason I haven't, well, I have some reason I haven't interested in this. We are a dry area, the wind blows and the dust and debris move, and it seems like homeowners and contractors have a habit for simply blowing the debris into the... and it seems like homeowners and contractors have a habit for simply blowing the debris into the street when they're cleaning lots or doing landscaping. And I made an inquiry and found out that that's illegal, but there's no enforcement. I'd like council to discuss that sometime in the future. I personally have got a lot of complaints about that. And this weekend, within a block of my house, block and a half, an individual decided to rake the side yard and raked it all into the street and left. Aggravating, but not unusual, because if it had been a partner or maintenance service, they would have done the same thing. Happens all the time. And I think that our intense interest in trying to present a picture of the city and cleaning it up, that's something that we've avoided addressing long enough, and I think we need to address it for the benefit of the beautification of this whole city and the people who live here. Most people comply, and as I say, it's very aggravating for those who don't because you can go to the extent of cleaning your property and the next day it's covered with trash and debris because down the street they're not complying with our rules and regulations. So I hope the council will discuss this very shortly.
Other questions?
I move for approval of these two items.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D eleven, agreement revising and restating an existing inter-agency loan between the SCLAA and the City of Victorville. Is that supposed to be SCLA or SCLAA? The City of Victorville?
Yes.
Is there a real need, an urgency to have this approved tonight by the council?
This item already exists, this is simply restating it and extending it. We had several loans that we talked about maybe six weeks ago, eight weeks ago. This one is essentially the same in nature, but because of some other priorities, it didn't make it onto that agenda.
Well, we have an inter-agency loan agreement for the council's approval, and the fund for the agreement is DIF. And I brought up DIF base last meeting or so and asked that it be agendized. Is this going to be on the next council agenda?
That particular item that you asked about, something that we're looking into. It's a little bit more involved, and the timing is a little bit challenging right now because one of the things that we're working on with Sterling, and Sterling's really the lead, is that they're actually revising the EIR for the airport, which would actually be a driver for identifying what are the capital improvements that would likely be charged under, under a DIF for airport improvements. So we're going to bring that back to you as soon as we feel like we have meaningful enough information to share with you.
Well, it's a policy matter, not, doesn't require any study at all whether or not the city council extends as a policy matter that DIF fees be applied to the base. It's a simple matter without a lot of discussion, council's either for it or against it. Secondly, this is a loan from the DIF fee that they're not paying into. And thirdly, we have an overly project, as I recall from the budget all along, for a road improvement with no DIF fees available. I'm in favor of also having that included and cancel that project till we get this resolved. Council members?
I'm not sure which project you refer to specifically, just to let you know about the DIF fees that we're discussing here. This is actually what we refer to as the library property across Civic Drive that was entered into by a former, former city manager. But ultimately, will be repaid out of DIF.
Well, there was a hint I heard from who that we had to wait on the policy at the base on the DIF because we needed a DIF study. We don't need a DIF study. It has nothing to do with the DIF study. It has nothing to do with the fees that are in effect right now. It's a policy question to extend the DIF fees to the base, period. I wanted to address, I think council can't avoid addressing it.
Is this, are these loan documents obstacles to that discussion? Or are they, are they related directly to that discussion?
Other than being DIF, they are unrelated to that discussion.
I agree that we need to have that discussion. My question here is, what are the prospects of repaying these original plan?
It's a matter of time, basically, time and, and future development. As far as having just an overall policy discussion about extending development impact fees to SCLA is something we can put on the next agenda. The first meeting in October, that's not a problem.
Are these loans expiring in some way? Are the loan agreements expiring?
This one, I believe, has come to term, yes.
Because we have been criticized for not properly documenting our inter-fund loans, and I would avoid that criticism if possible.
Regarding, and just an overall concept of charging a development impact fee or, or all of the development impact fees at SCLA is something we'll put on the next council agenda without, without any, any waiting. However, the existing development impact fee could not simply be extended to SCLAA or to SCLA because it is based on a project list. It's based on an assumed rate of development throughout the city that does not include SCLA. So if ultimately we are going to extend development impact fees, which is a discussion we'll have next in two weeks, that would require then a study to incorporate SCLA. It's not a matter of simply deciding to extend the existing fee because it would, you would lose the nexus between the fees and the projects.
Yeah, and, and, you know, some questions I have, I don't have a problem having that discussion, but I want to know what's going on at March. I want to know what's going on at San Bernardino International Airport, former Norton, on, you know, do we, you know, put ourselves in the foot by going down that road if they're not charging their particular areas, so development goes there versus coming to SCLA? I want to know the answer to that question. I don't know it today, so I would want staff to provide that. But going to what you just said, Doug, you know, my argument would be if you start charging DIF out of SCLA, then that brings the overall rate of DIF down citywide because all of a sudden you've expanded it to include SCLA. So what you would char, what you're charging currently that doesn't include SCLA, you start adding SCLA into that, you, you bring all that additional funding in, which brings overall DIF rate down based upon whether it's residential, industrial, commercial, that type of thing. So those things need to be looked at overall. I do agree, the discussion needs to be had. I think generally, from a policy perspective, we can make the decision, should we charge out there, should we not? But ultimately, what we charge and how that affects citywide DIF is a much broader discussion.
Well, we need to have it because I don't understand what you just said. That, that literally doesn't make sense to me.
So when you expand your sphere of what you're charging, it, it has to bring down the overall cost to each individual payer.
Let me give it a shot, Ryan.
So go ahead, maybe Doug can explain it easier, but you can't continue to charge the same rate when you're expanding the area that you're charging it in.
That should be part of the discussion that Mr. Cox has asked for, I think. Don't you agree? Let's, let's don't try and do it tonight. It isn't agendized. I think we need to get that on an agenda. But I think these loans need to be dealt with tonight, so I'm going to move approval of can we do D eleven and twelve together? Yeah, they're basically the same issue.
You absolutely could do them together as long as it's clear.
Do we need it?
Yes, D eleven and twelve together.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
That was for item eleven and twelve.
Correct.
Okay, so now we move on to public comments. I don't have any cards to give me.
Cards.
I don't know if, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak? One that you would? Please state your name, please, and, yes, please.
Okay, hi, my name is Etta Mellon. Okay, that's, that's Mellon, M-E-L-L-O-N. I'm a resident of Victorville. Okay, my, my problem is that there's a resident just down the street from me, and on the Fourth of July, they had just a fireworks show right there in the neighborhood. And the appearance of the driveway and the yard of that house is just, you know, just very not attractive. And so I thought I would bring it to the attention of the city that, you know, I think it should be cleaned up because there's a lot of homeowners like myself live there. So that's what I want to bring to the attention.
Did you leave the address for us?
I have it written down here. I could leave it with-
You must live in the same neighborhood I live in because I have a traffic problem in every-
Oh, really? I live on Berrydale Street, that's off La Mesa.
Okay, no-
I live at one-two-eight-five-nine Berrydale.
In fact, on my neighborhood, they're still setting off fireworks.
Well, on the Fourth of July, it was just, it was, it was really very dangerous and, you know, loud and disturbing for the whole neighborhood, but it was, it was very dangerous. I have some of the, the trash from those fireworks, really big, big things. And so that's my main concern, you know, as a, as a homeowner.
You can leave your card with the-
Leave it.
Over here?
Okay, I didn't fill out a card. I heard you say card, but I-
Well, you didn't fill out a card.
She will help you over here.
Yes, she'll help you. Thank you.
I'd like to make a quick comment if I could on that and just that what we're experiencing up in the High Desert is some folks that don't exhibit the behavior that we would expect, just, just common courtesy. And I see that on my street, and I think that people assume we live somewhere where you guys don't and that we don't have these problems. But I'm glad that she came here today to talk about this because that's what we're here for. And you've got to know that we all support this kind of code enforcement, these actions. When you think that there's some issue, we have a phone number, that we have a city staff, and you need to build a record on that particular address. Because otherwise, if you expect these people to act normal on their own, I, I can tell you that's not going to happen. So unfortunately, I wish it was different, but it is what it is, and I'm glad that she's here.
Well said, well said.
Okay, city manager, now it's-
Monica updated you all on the Fall Festival. You know, it's, will be a record-setting year. We set records last year with probably thirty thousand in attendance. We're expecting more than that this year. This is the biggest event to come to in the whole High Desert. So I know you've all been there, you'll be there. It's great fun. Following that, our next Community Cleanup Day is coming up on October twenty-second. You have until Monday, October third, to say that you're going to be a part of it and fill out the necessary forms to get your limited edition T-shirt. I don't know what color it'll be. It will likely look remarkably similar to the T-shirt from the spring, but the color will definitely be different. So if you want one of those T-shirts, let us know by October third.
Thirty thousand of them, right?
As many people as sign up by October third is the number that'll be printed.
Council members?
I don't have anything, no.
The only thing I have, and I'm going to give our city attorney a little bit of a hard time, is, you know, we're in the midst of campaign season, and I did ask for an ordinance on campaign signs. Since that has not come forward to us, there's no hope that I could ever see the city enforcing this after the election is over to force people to take down their signs. So just curious as to when that's actually going to come back.
Actually, council member McEckern, we took it to Planning Commission last week, and we are within the timeframes to get it adopted. It's going to be on your next agenda, and it will be enforceable, effective with this election.
Well, then, you've corrected. Glad to hear that.
Only reason it is not on this agenda is because we have to have a certain number of days between Planning Commission action and City Council action.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we had the number of days necessary to make it go into-
It will be in effect, and it's, it's a very tight timeline, but it will be in effect.
Then I stand corrected, I'm glad to hear that.
I have a quick comment. I would just like to pass on our wishes for a speedy recovery to Councilman Scott Nacev from Apple Valley. I, I do not, to be honest with you, I am not tracking very much what's going on with the other cities. But to have a heart attack and go through surgery, it's just a life-changing event. But anyway, I hope he has a speedy recovery.
Thank you so much. I was going to suggest that too. Thank you. I understand that he's doing well. Well, there's nothing before the council at this time, so now we adjourn.
Well, there's nothing before the council at this time, so now we adjourn.